Have a nice good progress. I know, I'm gonna gamble, I'm not going a little bit. Have a nice good progress. We're gonna have dinner first, it'll allow probably a little bit of time already to have some other people come on in and then we'll get, uh, gamble in and get started on our business, if that works. I'm gonna ask our county manager, is Derek Raulin, can you?
Dear everyone, we thank you for this day, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight and discuss the business of the county. We ask for it, that as we continue these discussions and proceed with these discussions tonight, that we do it under your watchful eye and with your guidance. Bless this food, bless the nurture of our bodies, bless our bodies to your service. Jesus name, amen.
First gun, first sentence.
Yep.
Opportunity to have our discussion tonight. Joe, I ask that court call where he's kinda falling right behind me when I call order. I'll let you and we'll just keep bearin' each other right on down.
Alright.
I'll go ahead and call a continuation meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order.
Call an order to the meeting of the Macon County Plan Board.
I would like to, uh, welcome everyone tonight. And when I was coming in the door this evening, I was like, I'm not gonna talk about an argument speech, and I was like, I'm just gonna look up the definition of planning. Definition of planning is, "The process of thinking about and organizing the activities required to achieve a desired goal." And planning is a fundamental property of intelligent behavior. It's like, that's a little too complex for me, so I came up with my own definition. My definition of planning is, is where do we wanna go, and how do we get there? So, where do we go from here? And I think that's gonna be the prominent discussion of what we have to do. Chat, any comments?
I'd echo those comments and just remind everybody that where there's no vision, to take the parish.
Good point.
So, part of what I said with the planning board is, it's our opportunity to have a vision for the future of Macon County.
Yep, I'm very glad, I'm very glad. We've enjoyed number one on our agenda, which is announcements. I would like to announce that the liaison to your board and the gentleman that was instrumental in setting this meeting up and the reasons behind it, Carl Gillespie, is down with flu-like symptoms, he said he hasn't been out of bed today, and he was very sorry for being here. But I would like to read it word for word from what he texted me, so, uh, he wanted us to love, all of you know that he appreciates you and that he has the utmost respect for all of you. And he has a couple of other notes here, which I'll read later on. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak to us? Any other announcements? Crickets? Alright, hold it on. Uh, we have no minutes to approve, chat?
Uh, we do have some minutes to approve. I'll find the board members have received those. Go have a motion to approve minutes from our last meeting. Go to the, your second.
Say it.
Any discussion? On the vote, say aye. Any votes?
Alright, I'm gonna ask the commissioners to, uh, if they've had a chance to review the agenda, or any additions or changes of, uh, or any arrangements that are approved. Second question approved.
Some movement, can I say?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
I did say for the planning boards, are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda? If not, now here, most of the agenda.
Some minutes.
Say it.
Say it.
That's it. Any discussion? On the vote, say aye.
I'm gonna go by give some quick introductions of our management team for the county and a group of individuals that I feel extremely blessed to serve with. I am Jim Tate, I'm from Highlands, I'm the chairman, current chairman of the board. To my right is Ronnie Bill, current vice chairman. To his right, Mr. Chester Gant, he's our county attorney, he's the one that makes sure we dot the i's across the t's and he keeps us online. Appreciate him very much. To his right is our commissioner Gary Shields. To my left is our county manager, Mr. Derek Raulin. To his left is Commissioner Paul Dugan. And to his left is our human resource director, Mr. Mike Deck.
Okay. Thank you. Joe Deon, served as chairman of the planning board for 2017. And what I'll do, I'll let the planning board members go around the table here and introduce themselves, and I'd say a word to about, uh, about themselves, and I'm gonna start with you, Eric.
Eric and Derek, um, I'm the surveying business here in town, and this is my first year being on the planning board.
Evan Carroll, uh, worked for drill state, got to be here in town for getting my phone ringing. Um, been on with the planning board for about a year now, really enjoyed it. It's kinda nice having somebody to put, to help counties get in, and work.
Chris Anderson, structural engineer, been on the planning board for several years, and appreciate the opportunity to serve Macon County and forward some more planning.
Build future of the county, and I'll be coming off the planning board here shortly. Been on for quite some time.
Seven years, is that right?
We've been training here.
That's how I'm a boss, president, general manager Franka Machine Company, go on, there been any questions? And I'm new to the planning board also.
Taylor Wigan, assistant to the clerk.
Jack Morgan, service of Kentland.
I'm Kathy Kancy, retired educator, now on the planning board, I think this might be my second year learning a lot.
Danny Walden, retired school client officer.
Justin Zentzer, now planner for Town Hall.
We have two members who are not here tonight, uh, Richard Bateman, uh, member from Highlands, had another meeting tonight at 6:00 PM, and wasn't able to make both of those. And also Ben Lassier, he just texted me a few minutes ago, his wife's car broke down, so he had to go pick his wife and kids up and get them ready to get home, that's after that.
Item number seven, old business. Joe, well, Jack, guys, I guess that day, I'm re-sending the comprehensive plan.
Alright, so, planning board, we've been working on this comprehensive plan for about a year now. We've been split up into sub-communities and been working diligently on that. Right now, our sub-communities are analyzing their information for the comprehensive plan. We're on schedule for those sub-communities reports to be to the planer in April, for Jack and me will work on those, make sure everything looks good and sounds good, and put it into the document to bring back to the planning board in June. For us two members, five, ten towns before, we'll be ready to present that to the commission board in August, if that's our plan.
Reports of each one of the sub-communities. As I mention each one, I'll give members of that subcommittee opportunity to elaborate or add to anything I say today. This is very brief. The economic development is center, and he seems to be on track for every one, do you agree with that?
Yep. We'll see what he turns in.
Land use and environmental, Bill Futral, and Ben Lassier.
And Ben, I've met several times, and we're, we're on the full track there, that isn't a big test there.
Transportation and housing, Harold and Hawks.
Only thing we've got left to do is really add the bottom numbers from 2016 into the plans. We're good.
Education, Bill and Kingsley.
We, um, we've had a couple of times with our temporary committee, we had Gary Shields and Curtis Dowdell and Chris Volvin and Terry Dale, and we were, we are on track, we're almost finished, but then Matt Mason was helping us with those meetings, and we're just trying to cross that line and update a little bit from those meetings last year, so we're, we're very close.
Recreation, also Bill and Kingsley.
We're close on recreation also.
I was asked to meet with the regulation commission when they met, the tenant, I think, question. There is, we'll solve the lack of information, they promised, they promised they would have it. And license, healthcare, childcare, senior care, that is Gary and Anderson.
We've been meeting with the health director, Jim Rocker, who's been helping, um, help put some meetings together. I mean, it's gonna be a planning board meeting in hope in March, to do a presentation with the public here, senior care, health services section of the plan, and I would suspect that section will wrap up March at all great.
You guys, you're studying, technically, I'm gonna add something. That's all, too. Well, we appreciate your efforts, without a doubt. You saying August probably, our last meeting?
Yes. As I plan, I'm gonna have a four-year-old at your age.
Well, we're gonna move on to, is there anything else? Old business, I'm working on. We'll move on to item number eight, new business, and this is where we get in the road, remarks is, uh, where we're going and how do we get there. Item A is recommendations for, uh, future projects, and it has planning board members, but I'm gonna open this up to the commissioners as well, future, as I know I've had a couple, Carl Gillespie related on, but I've had, I've had an idea, a good idea, which I approve of, I think he's on track, so, I'm starting, starting to reverse this time, starting on this side of the room, is that okay? Just something you'd like to say, or topics that you think the planning board might need?
Um, sorry to put you on the spot. There's lots of them, but I mean, I think, I think the broadband is a big one, and also I like the drug issue, and, and, I don't know much to turn a little bit off, but I guess that we have a lot more discussion.
Shouldn't agree more? It's a sort of a brainstorm session, so if we'd like to hop out of order, if anybody would like to go, just raise your hand, hook it out of order, but if not, we'll just move around. If you wanna pass, just say, say pass, I'm a little way off.
Justin said, and I'm very gracious, I know that caused, uh, proposing. Well, um, I don't have any, I guess I have more of a question, but, um, in seeing firsthand the work and the success of Calvi School, um, I don't know how to, I guess what I'm thinking is, I don't know how to plan necessarily, but I think the county's put so much into some of our cultural and historical efforts, that it might be nice to incorporate that, and even if we just said, "Continue to support these efforts in our plan," I don't know how the commissioners would feel about us veering off in that direction as a separate section again.
I'm gonna write it down, and maybe I should've been a little bit more descriptive in kind of what's, uh, what I'm expecting, uh, the chairman of this board tonight, is I'm hoping we can brainstorm, uh, get your feelings, we respect all of you, all of your opinions. We're gonna take these back, and perhaps at our next meeting, we'll bear these down, and we'll give another liaison, and let the board back to you, kind of a direction, who wants you to go, but I didn't want to come in here, uh, with a sledgehammer or a baseball bat and say, "Hey, this is what y'all are doing, this is what we want y'all to work on tonight, and don't touch anything else." So y'all are of a important parts of Macon County, and y'all have just as good ideas as we do, and more, and more brains, and more ideas that we can pull together, we'll take those and we'll hash down, pull out the sign, what, what exact route we wanna take, but all this brainstorming, this, right, my, 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 towards everybody.
I've got a couple things there, uh, and they're kind of wide ranging, and y'all, y'all's gonna be, and my former background, agriculture's been a part of that, folks that moved here and moved here for that rural lifestyle. I'd like to see the county develop a farm land protection plan, uh, to go along with voluntary ag districts, and that'd have some, uh, importance for, uh, in the future for farm land preservation efforts and helping to obtain grant funds and, uh, require less matching funds in the future for those kinds of projects. Look out the window behind you here, this will be my second point, uh, we've got the new sales of the landfill going up, this is looking, I mean, twenty-five, thirty, forty years down the road, but what are we, what's our options after we fill this one up?
That's what the planning board's about.
To, uh, for planning, we need to be thinking about that, because, you know, we don't want our kids or any kids being left here when this one's filled up, saying, "I don't know what we're gonna do next, or, you know, is it another landfill, or is it something out of the box, thinking, uh, options, uh, to go ahead and be planning for, for that place." You know, the other one, lands that are premium, especially for government-related jobs, is there a way that we can work with the eastern band to some point in the future, in some of there, restrictedness on, on what, that we can, um, as a county, be able to do, you know, properties that we currently have, that we can be able to do something with, and I think those are some, uh, things we can plan for for the future, um, I don't know if there's avenues, pathways to gain leverage in that, but definitely something I think that we ought to be looking into. And my last point would be, uh, the control of growth, or how we want growth to be in the county, uh, especially sprawl, having a economic and efficient manager for, for development within the county as a whole.
Good. That's it. Jack, you wanna go last, or you?
I'll just go, I'll just go last, but I feel that this, um, could, uh, we, we have a, a plan that was written, a basic plan. I think the, uh, not only do we need to prepare this current transportation, or not transportation, comprehensive plan board, no, but as soon as it's finished, I would like the planning board not just put that, say, finished. I think that the planning board should be asked, would evaluate how, how that's going, because we're, is that not your plan for this, are we moving in that direction at all, and report to the commissioners about that, maybe on an annual basis. Just so you know that we're still thinking, important things are important enough first to put in, planning, but there are important enough first to push forward, so not so much for us to push it forward, but for it to move forward.
Before we follow the roadmap.
Well, I'd like to just add what Joe was saying about as far as land use, uh, possibly creating areas, economic areas, Galway, Vanahala, Otto, areas that could be, um, try to push business in that direction, maybe not have a sprawl that you talked about, that sets us out of these areas, but that would be, um, better for, to try to push businesses in those directions, and if those have a sprawl, I don't know how that would, what that would look like, or if we could more pursue.
I think what's gonna elaborate on, on Bill and Joe, that would be to look at maybe even more specifically, planning of corridors, other than before you want to work sound, whether you, you know, the Delaware Road, or sixty-four east or west, or the Highlands area, you wanna take those corridors are valuable assets in Macon County, for traffic coming in and out and through. Also, something that I think's a valuable asset in Macon County is the dark skies, to be able to see the stars at night, which, there's a lot of places around the country where you can't see the Milky Way at night, even when, you know, when the moon's, you know, not shining bright, I think that's a resource we have, and we should consider trying to find ways to save that.
One of the biggest issues I see, I don't know if it goes over the planning board head, because this is a large issue in Broadbend. I think Broadbend is desperate, and I don't know if it's more than what really we can tackle with the planning board, but that's something I'd like to see working on at some, you know, at some level. Other thing that, that I see through state is, uh, I really don't know how to put this, but mobile home restriction on, on age, of what is probably in the county, because really I feel like the rest of the counties around us have restrictions on what they allow to be put up, and we do not, as a county, have that, so therefore, I feel like we're getting a lot of leftovers that come into our county, and it's gonna get a lot to be put up in other counties. So I would like for us to see, you know, some kind of restriction there that just can help reserve what we have to use.
Hunting Camp is in, out of County, Georgia, which is probably one of the most rural counties in Georgia, and they actually have them. Yeah, we brought one in, and they actually came out and had to respect, did their goddamn before, yeah. She could put an accepted system on that, perfect.
Just to echo everybody else, I can't really add a whole lot to it, but the broadband's an issue, I know it's been talked about a lot, um, so until we can get it on out, it's gonna be harder for young folks, um, come in, move into some of these more rural areas.
Any other ideas pop up?
I just hear anything mentioned about education, and...
They haven't got to be.
I would really like to say go with the long, long range, a long range of planning for education, but building wise, and maintenance wise.
All good, I'm good with it. Okay. Good night, Jeff. Cheers.
I'm not gonna talk about education or breaking border situation, but I don't think we, uh, our county commissioners have been far enough long yet to, for us to share information. And I believe that our next meeting in March, we're gonna ask for a closed session to talk about this topic, that's all we'll talk about today. You know, we want many to talk about the future there, and Jack and I have talked about it, and I think the, in my opinion, the county commissioners have to see the total picture, see the information set that we have before we start talking about it, and, and, but I was interested in reading, I don't wanna steal, uh, if it feels, I don't know if you're gonna talk about name of hell, that's good, but I still think there's a, in the education part, they mentioned sales tax, and you look at, we all say, "Well, that's an increase in tax," but there's more people participating in a sales tax, and some of that money is there, Mark, because we can see, uh, Grayton County, and some of other counties that may have adopted a sales tax, and how's it benefited, the pros and cons of it, I'd like the planning board to look at and see, that's a, uh, reasonable thing to have a conversation about, it's better than, and along the kind of taxes, it's a sales tax, and, uh, another thing that, uh, looking at your education thing, does the K-12 and SEC, we're all in the same budget, does that need to be separated, and, and look to do the thing, that right there, for any budget?
Actually, the SEC, when we, when we're doing budget summaries, then we'll group SEC and, uh, our K through 12 education together, just to provide a picture of what we do, but in the actual budget, they're split apart.
Okay. And I saw that in one of the things.
Right, it is for some, for some purposes.
Okay. Broadband, broadband internet, Derek and I are working with the committee, uh, we're looking at, we're working with a lot of region, like, what we found out is that you try to isolate your county from different things individually, and very little money's for you. The money's go into the regional concept, and so we have to kind of play ball with everybody in order to get some of the benefits of it. But I want you to know that we meet once a month, uh, I'll say this, it's like trying, for me, it's like trying to drink water out of a fire hose, it's, I get choked, about the first five minutes with all the technology, people that's come in and talk, that they're really, uh, people who have experience, uh, they, they, they're interested in exactly what you're talking, mid-mile, last mile, I bet that was a big thing the last time, at, uh, in mine, build up your house, I can see the, uh, the tower sitting on his porch. I didn't know till today, that if you're above that tower, you don't get any service. Like I said, and I look, I'm looking right straight at it, and I think it's, but elevation-wise, you're probably, you may run into that, and I think you know who they're talking about, but, uh, no sales service, internet, he, that goes, above the tower, and he said, "Well, I don't know how you go out, make it, uh, a tower taller, so that people who follow this category can receive service." So I think that's something, looking at, but I just wanted you to know, we are working on the broadband internet service in the next meeting, February, uh, March, or, March 6th?
Yeah, it's March 6th, and kind of just a little bit about, uh, just to add to that, because so many of y'all have mentioned broadband, and I think, you know, we're finding out, as Mr. Shields said, it's been like drinking water from a fire hose, just the amount of information with this committee that we have been able to gather from folks that have done this, folks that have been integral parts in developing the WNC EdNet, that connects, that has fiber to each and every school in Macon County, and connects those back to the central office. We've met with folks that have successfully implemented thirty-nine million dollar projects in West Virginia, rural counties just like this one, that were seeking broadband internet, and these projects have happened, and they are available to happen, and there's money out there to get it. That money, however, when you look at the broadband issue, and it is a last mile issue, you know, we found out that we're very fortunate here in Macon County to have these middle-mile networks like Boston West, that get information out of here directly to a tier-one internet provider, so, or tier-one internet site. So we're very fortunate with that, and we have resources here, um, and we're just finding out now how to utilize what we have, uh, the assets that we currently have here, how to, how to use those, and how to plan, um, in conjunction with that, to make the most out of what we have. So, we're, we do, we have a meeting once a month with this broadband committee, we gained a lot of information, uh, within this month, you will see, I think the surveys will be distributed to the school system, to the children in the school system. A survey will be distributed, pretty much the same type of survey that was distributed in Haywood County, and what that's gonna allow us to do more than anything, is, it's asking, "Hey, do you have broadband at home, do you have internet at home?" Kind of a little bit more about, you know, where the internet is, where, where's our problem areas, who has internet, who doesn't have internet, why don't they have internet? So to try to get a little bit more information about that. So as we're taking this inventory, we're also keeping an eye on this grant funding, we're working with the southwestern commission at a regional level, all counties are, to pursue this grant funding regionally, rather than us competing against each other and ending up knocking everybody out of it. So there's a lot of things going on right now, and the broadband has remained front and center with this committee, we have made a lot of progress, and we are going to continue working on it.
In Macon County, uh, of this, I'm not gonna say six, but you know, when they pay without, uh, counties, Macon County, better off than the other five, and, uh, there's really hardships in some of these areas. And the reason why folks come to education, one, based on you, ours too, are top as far as internet, those kinds of things. So, we're gonna make sure that, that stays there, how can we connect it, even if you have the broadband, no wiring, or somewhere like that, there's a lot of discussion about that. Uh, Macon County, there's, there's both of, we're no both, Haywood County, uh, so we're both, uh, other five counties. I guess, uh, another thing, it's, it kinda happened this week, we had a different mission to be before, um, I talked to Mr. Morgan about this today, somewhere along the line, we need to address the homelessness situation. Mr. Burke, Bork, Bork. Mr. Burke, Bork, Bork. But anyway, uh, they're in the process at this time of doing a survey, kind of see what kind of problems we got. And I've been, Dr. John Curtis, uh, is the head of this survey, and I talked to him the other day. And they're compiling data, you got, uh, near homeless, you got homeless, and families and stuff like that. So at a point in time, or before, and I talked about today, when I get that information, I'll bring it to him. Uh, look at this thing, uh, I've seen from, from the data I've looked at, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, it's doubled. And, you know, that keeps it going, we're, we're gonna be, we're already in trouble. But homelessness needs to be addressed of the, uh, the near homeless and the homeless. That's a, that's a thing that, uh, I just think we, we need to capture that. Because if you don't capture that, it can capture you.
First of all, uh, thank you, members of the planning board. Uh, thank you for your time invested. I said, or, Mr. Deal said, uh, for many years, he was liaison with this board as a commissioner for many years. So being there to all the communities when they lined up in Manahaila with axes, been there, done that. So, uh, but, uh, you know, when you're planning and determining it right, there's a lot of things to plan for. Transportation, Justin and I sat on the regional transportation board. Probably one of the most important things that, you know, there's a new way of planning now for transportation that Justin can do, that nobody really knows how to figure it out. I've been meeting with the new secretary, yeah, the secretary of property, probably, asking if he knew how the point system was laid out, and he just rolled his eyes. I guess that meant maybe not, I don't know. But if you've not seen how the point system that Justin and I have struggled with for four years, Justin, and Jack, uh, it's, it's unique, to say the least, but, uh, you know, we still have well over two thousand miles of secondary road in Macon County, still well over a hundred fifty miles of gravel road in Macon County. Uh, for transportation, and you talk about the main corridor, we're developing a main corridor. We've had this discussion for fifteen years that I know of, in the corridor. And the corridor, when you, when you get, when the planning board starts that, and Jack and Roger will remember this discussion well, it's gonna follow the infrastructure. So on one of your lists, it's the infrastructure, which is water and sewer. But the water and sewer, of course, is controlled by Town Franklin. Sometimes does this county need to look at the water and sewer business? If we really wanna see the growth of Macon County and have how to control it, if you control the water and sewer, you control the growth. That's where the growth is gonna happen, is where the water and sewer is. Anybody disagree? Where the growth is, or about anything anymore, that's where it's gonna happen in. So, uh, water and sewer is a huge, huge thing. And, uh, we, we talked about this for years. And, uh, so, and that's, now that's not low-hanging fruit, Sarah, that's a big, that's a big project. So transportation is one. Another thing, uh, we talked about broadband, this discussion was both yesterday. We're penalized on where we live. The property really penalized us on broadband. And we've had that discussion, and I'm so glad that, that you have people who's really interested, Mr. Shields, and Mr. Gillespie are really, uh, Mr. Gillespie really knows this field. And, uh, and Mr. Shields really took the interest in it because of the education part of it ties right in for these students and other people, and economic development. When everyone sells a house to these people, they all want it, true, ever?
Yeah.
And, and so it isn't, it's, it's, and it's, it's difficult. Uh, it's a difficult, that's, it's, that's a big lift, too. And, uh, with the data that's being gathered by the county manager and Mr. Gillespie, with Shields, and others that's working on it, this planning board definitely needs to be involved. And will all areas be covered in Macon County? If they're up there, hollering, great, I don't, I'll never, you know, that'd be grumpy. Uh, but if we can get parts recovered to some of these areas, it'd be wonderful, too. So broadband, uh, another thing we need to concentrate on is our workforce in Macon County. This planning board, uh, you talk about economic development, we're gonna find a workforce. Where is our workforce? Ten years down the road. For agriculture, for somebody who'll expand a plant, build a plant, hire new workers. I'd like to see the planning board more involved with SCC and training specifically for specific jobs. And then Mr. Shields, as he sits on that board, as is Mr. Gillespie. I'd love to see them bring back the trade program. Does anybody remember when they taught plumbing, wiring, and bricklaying? Guess who's making the money now? I know. How many pots could take? Bill Fisher could take. Who's making the money now in the bid construction work? Plumbers, electricians. Uh, not everybody's gonna sit in a cube, ten with ten kilos with a computer, they'll make a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars a year. Plumbers is making the money, electricians is making the money. That's Bill Fisher go out and hire ten in the morning, not quick. Ten helpers in the morning, not quick. No, you can't. So the workforce is, is a, I don't know where that fits in the planning board, but moving forward, you know, with the training, uh, everybody seems to need that education, and that education's one. Matt, I've got a young with two master's degrees, two younger with master's degrees, one with two master's degrees, and one that tried college twice, he's making more money than both of them. So, you know, college education is one, but I'm telling you, in our area, your construction is gonna still black the dog's fur on time. Just give them that. So I'd like to see SCC cater to that a little bit, just something the planning board thinks. Some other things that, as we look down the road, that we really need to concentrate on. I love trying to deal with something about farm land protection plan. There's a lot of counties that have that. Agriculture is still big in Macon County, and if you ever wanna see those numbers, they're available at the Department of Extension. And, uh, he might pull somebody to work that. And, uh, so agriculture is still a, and it's not a restrictive thing, and Joe can shout that with you. And, uh, so, uh, that is really something to look at. You hear Justin mention the drug problem and the, and this is nothing new. It's, some others are definitely for a long time, we did in different places. And so, but what you see different now is people speaking out about it. From the people that came to you tonight, if you've not heard about these folks who came to our meeting, parents, this lady, Miss Stansfield, she spoke about her son. And you see that start happening. The biggest problem we have about it, and I don't think about it, we're starting the Westmore County Drug Alliance, you might have heard about that, our residents committee, two, three candidates on that board. And it's a good board, but, you know, if you ain't careful, the committee will be just a place to gather these suffering. I've had enough of them, and I'm told in that, but if it could really be a benefit, uh, that's fine. We're also starting a youth committee about drug abuse. Have no trouble defining youth. If anybody's got a definition for that, I'd like to have it. We've had that argument, discussion, I guess, a little, what is youth? In North Carolina, sixteen-year-olds is the most, one of two states. I have a little opinion about that. We are trying to get that changed. Been to Morgantown, prison, seen seventeen-year-olds out there. But this is something that the planning board, it kind of, you know, when you talk about that, we have, for most people in Macon County jail today, that ever, today, it's a new record. And men, is it? Oh, today is a new record. So that's not a good thing, that, uh, and how many children have ever been given that? So folks are really dead. So anyway, uh, so those are the things, things that's coming up that you really need to talk about. This is where the hammer comes in, we'll, we'll eat over the hammer, we'll go eat over the hammer with this, Jack. So, but on the drug, back to the drug situation, uh, what we're having now is this making of parents. And the stigma, if you can get across the stigma, that's gonna be the biggest problem, when this, if folks talk about it. When you have cancer and get sick, they bring the cancer, I don't say we're sorry. You know, if you have somebody that has a drug addiction, or they die of drug overdose, they're only gonna have an act. They don't wanna have a spit in your church. If you have cancer, then you gotta, they gonna have, gonna have a benefit of MVI, hot dog hand worker, and not for addiction. Talk to this hopeless back out here, take a load in jail today, probably seventy-eight percent is out for that reason. So there are things we can do, and we're discussing those things with the planning board. If it affects the community, you get Texas Board, because you are probably one of the most, about one of the most, who would do this whole county? You're looking at the, the last thing is, uh, Mr. Higgin, he can speak to it when he, when he comes around him. We've talked to him, with Jack, and the county attorney, and Chairman, Mr. Higgin, we voted Tuesday night, uh, and Carl, about, we had a, a plan in place for grading license. You have to have a license to become a licensed grader in Macon County. To Mr. Higgin brought to our attention that that grading license really wasn't affecting, wasn't beneficial. Jack, remember when we put in place, if, uh, if Matt Mason's here, we put it in place, I don't think we did it hastily, I don't think we did. We, we done it for good reason, because people are coming in, wrecking backhoes, and just going after their land and making messes. Real messes. So we put the information into that policy. Of course, then through the recession, a lot of that died down. All's idea was that it's not, it's not a good, the policy wasn't good, the plan wasn't good, it wasn't really doing no benefit. Actually, I've listened to that, there was some volition, people, that there was some truth to that. It, we, and even Jack agreed we could probably do better. Do away with it, poof, and we needed it all. So we're gonna ask that, uh, that your liaison bring that to you, as, not to put you on the front burner, uh, Mr. Chairman, but, but that needs to be looked at pretty quick. We'd like to have something back on that. Mr. Morgan has all the information that you might need, and, uh, on just some requests, if that's something that's still needed, does it give a level of protection to the citizens of Macon County in any way? Does it give land protection? Or is it, you know, we ain't worried about the fee schedule, there was a twenty-five-dollar fee, there was some educational promise that went along with it. And if it is, if it's not useful, it's liaison to Jack's department, then that's fine. But if it is, if it just serves some use and purpose, and needs rewritten, and we can put a formal resolution for the county that, that we can get, that this board might approve, I think the planning board is instrumental, and I think the chairman's gonna speak to that. So, but, uh, just one more thing about the education, the, Bill, you gotta remember this planning board, I don't know of any county of the high state, yours has put more into education than it, Macon County for its size. I mean, you put this up, of any, of any county per capita, of the millions we put into, not only, not only to the school itself, but especially in the building, it'll exceed fifty million easily, yes. So, uh, we've done right well for education in Macon County, and we've got, we've got more to do. There's some heavy lifting coming up in education, which we can do, but the real heavy lifting, uh, you know, is from the state of North Carolina. State of North Carolina's gonna do the right thing. When it's down to seventeen percent on your lottery money, when it's supposed to be forty percent, that's something the planning board can take care of. That's up to state and local. So we're capturing a hundred million dollar deal since it came into place, the lottery, a hundred million, pay them. A hundred million will be able to do a high school, maybe a middle grade school statewide. So that's reading all the counties now, having to go out and do it. And a lot of these counties are not like Macon County, don't have a credit rating the same as some of the top, uh, foremost countries in the nation. We didn't, we have the, we buy the money, you gotta pay it back. But if the lottery money was to have the way it's supposed to be in education, it'd make, make this planning board, our education a whole lot easier. Because you've got schools now, south Macon, you're seeing required, ready, about to play back, no one about it. Six hundred something thousand dollars in technology, we just borrow it.
One, four, five?
Five, five years ago, made it back, so, and stuff like that. So, so the states wanna, you know, if they wanna invest in our kids, they need to do their, our kids to do for our little county's protection, so. But I think the planning board has, uh, will certainly have to play a part in the loophole in, in education in a lot of ways. But mostly, it's, we appreciate it, we have a lot of things on the table, as you can look. We are the only county in the state building, Atlanta, we're it. And, uh, of course, you're gonna be in sixty years from our position pool. Hopefully, there'll be some kind of technology, Joe, I don't know. No, I don't think none of the others know it, but I know we're not having ships to ball around doors, is what I know. So, uh, but we appreciate that the planning board and all y'all do, and the time it takes, and, uh, and the comprehensive plan that we've worked on. We, we done one of them this morning, back in, and it's just been updated over time, and so. So we've been down that road, it seems like Derek Rowling had something to do, something, one of them, he might have worked on one of them, I believe. But thank you, planning board, for all you do. And if we can be of assistance as you move ahead, but y'all gonna have to probably be there for days.
You're playing this devil.
Where you going, Eric?
I don't know, you can't put a goal forward.
That's how we, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna mention just three items. One, and we'll follow up with what Ronnie mentioned about, our Tuesday night meeting, which suspended the Macon County grading license, that was called grading license, that, that will be coming out of the pipeline, you know, really quickly. And we'll look for your bright minds to give us some ideas on whether we let it all together, or there's some improvements, or what needs to happen to it. We'll take your consideration and try and, and make something happen. Uh, second thing, uh, probably nobody in the room knows about it, except for Derek and I. I think Derek's had some conversations with the group that's getting ready to start studying our county facilities, our county infrastructure on that end. Are they meeting the needs of the departments? Are they big enough? Do we have maintenance concerns? Do we have cleanliness concerns? Are they big enough? Are they too small? Too big? Maybe start studying, see if we can make some plans of where we go with our, our infrastructure as far as building. I'm, I'm excited about that, I know it's something that's, uh, that's important. And then Carl Gillespie, uh, mentioned too, I didn't aggravate him too much, because I know he wasn't feeling well today, but I asked if he had any, or not even great, but asked if he had any thoughts on what, uh, you might like to see in the discussion. If you had an interesting idea of that, I mentioned, and that was maybe taking a peek at how the county provides capital outlay. Give your thoughts on that, so. With that being said, before I, I kind of close this item off of our agenda, is there any other thoughts? That, any other ideas that popped up since you've been listening to the conversation?
Mr. Higgin, did you elaborate a little bit on the, like, the grading thing? That, was my understanding that you brought that for future?
This program, you know, I think, we've talked about all of that, your team, and everything. I think we, as a board of commissioners, we need to continually, just like we do in our business, we evaluate every function, every dollar is spent in county, we need to, we need to value the works for. This was just, we submitted what we'd like to see worked on this year out, that was one, just a little, just a little thing to throw up there to see how it was handled. But it's a grading license, I used to have a grading, a grading license, I think, was it? When this thing came out, remember the clean water contractor licensing?
Yes.
This is a, is this a continuation of that program?
Uh, it ran down parallel to the, that was, that kind of gave us about even.
But that's gone, but clean water cross the line, I understand it did. And Ronnie alluded to it, when everything started developing during the boom, how do we slow this down? How do we control, you know, uh, and this was a thing that just, we, this came up?
It had nothing to do with so many, damn it. It had to do with people ripping back all the time, land all the way.
And, well, yeah, that was probably the purpose of it, but never did work. You had to have a license, it was, this was done by board action, no board that's, nothing, this was just a board vote.
this was just a board vote. And I always said, well, one board give, another board can take it away. But it was, it stated that if you, when a grading, if you were in a grading business, you had to possess a license, and there's a definition of how much you deserve, is that right, Jack?
The, does this grading license allow the grading contractors to serve up in Macon without a plan? Or otherwise, you're going to just say, I agree with you.
Yeah. Education.
Yes, there's, junior education, there's with the certification of coworkers, I think.
Yeah. Like how to put up a shield here.
Which, and, and then talking with Jack, and I've had a couple of guys ask me, you know, one of them asked me, oh, what? And this isn't a guy who has his North Carolina contractor G sig and do anything, he's regulated by the state. He said, why do I need a grading, a Macon County grading license? If I didn't get the biggest grading job in Macon County, you know, you'd send him off and I was building my landfill, and they're grading, Macon County grading license. And he said, this is a no. So, that's why I brought it up, because I've been asked by a couple of guys, one in Highlands and one here. And then talking with Jack, you know, and I used to have a license and I had it before, you had a guy in Highlands who rented about three or four acres of land where I had a big septic system way down. At that time, one of the county employees was there, and I'm up to raid the county employees way naked, I used to be one. Came up, and we were talking to this old boy, and he said, have you got your grading license? He said, I'll make one, but. And he said, yeah, you got to make that grading license. And he said, well, how'd I get it? Well, just come down tomorrow and we'll go through it. So, he went and got his license, and a couple of days later, he's still up there doing the same thing. And there was a program that was hard to monitor, people moving in, moving out, out, whatever. And it was, I think Jack said, we never laid a fine, if you didn't have, if you didn't have grading license and you engaged in that practice, they could lay you a fine, a hundred dollar, they fined you. But I don't, who made that decision, Jack? Who made the authority? Or was that the fine?
That was the fine.
Yeah. But when the thing was enacted, I think it just kind of fell through the cracks, didn't it, Eric? Was ever really delineated? Now, the whole program was for work?
Uh, it was. We had two, three, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
And it's just, in my opinion, that is my personal opinion, and we all have, it's, it's in my business, I look at something and it's sad and it's just lame or it's not working, in my opinion, and as a business owner, I have the authority to act that thing and just sort of way. But that's why I'm going to present it to the board to get the full board, you know, I don't think it's, in my opinion, I don't think it's effective. Now, it's just, as a businessman, I have a whole time license, isn't it? And if you, if, if you can continue it, we're just licensed to that. And I, I, it's, it's certainly a person, my personal opinion, to have this thing, let's just, let's act it. That would have been my vote, was just to eliminate the plan completely, but I guess the proper way to do it is to get reviewed, you know, but, that's not new sense work.
Thanks. Anything else? One more.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
Back to the drug situation. What impact will the dairy program? You mentioned Hopeless, he's here, he can help him speak.
Uh, it's from my understanding, they didn't do it periodically, I don't think it's as done as, as much as what it was when I was in school.
Right.
It's not had as much, but they still have some dairy options here in the county.
We're, we're, great conversation here. We talked to, sure. I'll tell the vice speaker before we go in there, and we're picking that conversation back there. And, um, I had an opportunity to bring some ideas off, I don't know if I can read. Did you make sure, try to reach in the elementary schools because, um, many of you went through the dairy program, I put, um, to this frequency. And it was good, but the splashback on it was, it's like, I went through the sex education thing, you know, abstinence and safe sex. Boy, I didn't know there was such a war out there. But when you get with a dairy program, the idea is that you're opening up the information the kids were dumb about, now they're going to try it. So, that's, there's a battle out there, you have the splashback of that.
Right.
So, and so you have to work through that, and those splashbacks, they, they can, they can just make a rug block out of it. But I think there's other avenues, we're talking, Sherpa, about, to do some things because at the, the high school level, Sherpa was really good, any kind of incident that started growing within the community, whether it was the cutting, or what it may be, we immediately had a signal that, and making everybody aware of it. So, when you make people aware of it, the curiosity level goes up, and that's where you can have the splashback on it.
What does that community mean, Ronnie? That's Monday night, Carson Center, Carson.
We, we were having, we started this life, we invited, just, we thought, it's not a, it's just for friends to get together, who, and all that sort of finance, grandmothers, whoever, grandfather, you, it affected many, many families, and to have them come out and just to encourage one another, because they're family, they're, like their kids who have cancer, or they're loved ones, and they're, you see many working kids, sixty years ago? We have a Maconian now, and they use highway housing, and, and with the same, we're going to be gone sixty years ago. It don't, it's no respect for a person, no respect for age, no respect for economic. So, it's, and, and it's not just our county. He had a graft, and I've got all his, he had a graft, he was, what is it, talking about the opiates. By the way, compared to alcohol, alcohol is still, it's semen, this is up here, opioid, alcohol is up here, opioids is here.
What time is it?
Uh, give me the six thirty. And it's for parents who encourage one another, and, and.
But the public is impacted, or is it?
Yeah, you had, you know, it's, it's for.
It's affected the software.
It's affected, it's affected a lot of families, but if you want to be there to encourage the, the these folks who are there, this is just the second meeting, it's, it's the fact of stigma. If you don't cross the stigma, stigma's the worst part of it. Once you get these parents involved, the legislature, you got to remember, legislature got thirty million dollars off of this area last year out of substance, thirty million. So, uh, so you, this is house money, we talked about the Medicaid yesterday, none of these people are, now they, they don't, they're not Medicaid approved, you got to get them Medicaid approved, digital paper, they got money. We have all kinds of money in North Carolina fighting the drug problem, don't think we don't have the money in Medicaid, we do. Even though we didn't get the Medicaid expansion, which was really ill, but we didn't get that. So, we do have the money, but it, and we've got a system, but it's fragmented. It's like Tommy Fox trying to weld these tables together, but the pieces of steel that over here, they're down all over the table. And that's where the middle health system is in North Carolina. It's just fragmented. And if you had a chart, where, where are they getting drugs from? You got to know the start of this pill, one pharmacy, we can give you the whole message, I know way too much more out of it. Purdue Pharmacy, sorry, Purdue Pharmacy, one Purdue, one, they were just fine, six hundred million in two thousand twelve. They had a change formulation of the pills, then to make a potter to crutch, potter to smoke, six hundred million, six hundred million to the ends, okay, out here. So, Purdue Pharmacy, and this opioid, there's two kinds of opioids, they're all of different properties, heroin, different properties. Everything else that's in pill form does not, because they're all same thing. Fifty-three percent of them are seed cones, have medicine cabinet, that's where it starts. Some come from friends, and then, you know, some is in, in addiction. Sixty-year-old fellow today in Hickory House, in, in Hickory Highway House, unattentive addiction, he had that turned five years ago. They've lost everyone. So, it's unattentive addiction. So, there's a lot of that, there's, it's just different things. Had a lady, she went to have her knee worked on, and you can see it now and here, in the doctor, she looks at a number of pills prescribed to Macon County in two thousand fifteen, over eight million opioid pills to Macon County. We leave the state, by the way, to Macon, Macon. And, so she went before, and she wouldn't have any replacement, just, I don't know if we'll never turn them, but, so before she went into surgery, they had prescribed her forty, forty milligram oxytocin. Before she, she told this, her name now, well, I'll tell you her name, her name's Tara Larson, she's a Medicaid expert in North Carolina, if you ever want to name that Medicaid, she's the one to call. She's the one telling the story. Of course, she asked the surgeon, what do you think? And, and you keep hearing this word over and over, and you go to law, you can turn up the medical, put it here, code of conduct, you do that work, code of conduct. And the doctor said, we want it to live, and we want the people to be less pain, but we, you know, she took them for years, and sold them, they were addicted. They say, she should, she should, that's, that's in Africa, she had a turkey, but she did, but, but that first topic. Twenty, when you have twenty-three million pills in the seven part west county in one year, that's legal prescription, that's not very legal people. They're not getting the heroin that's coming in. Now, you see in the deaths, take that opioid, the deaths is, if you've been off opioid and you've not took them, tragic death, one of the tragic deaths in this county, you've done so well, had a good job, you've done so well, Jim Tate knows you well, and have done so good, Bill, Bill Fittrell knows this fellow well. And you've done so well, but he, you do not do, and if you've been off of them, and you come back and you, and you take that same amount, even if you, you've been detoxed and you pop it, forty milligrams, and you, and you look for that there in the north zone, you're so, you're so happy. Getting clean for five months. And so, it's, it is deadly, and you got this stuff called fence and all the other places that will, and car fence and all, they put down elephants, it's super deadly. It's money, it's a problem, I think, by the way. So, the drug problem is, is real and hits, you can't deny it, because there's too many, and, but it's prescription, it's a pill. You know, it ain't be too bad, it's a pill. So, but it's real and, and, and a lot of us, a lot of us around this room are coming down now and been affected by it. And, and we keep working and, we're going to Washington, we have a meeting on it, in Washington, in Mako. You take myself, we'll be in the meeting concerning that, in Mako, I sit on as the senate committee chair, and he stopped, just this committee, it's, it's a nationwide thing. And, so we've got a lot of folks involved, it's not our county. But our county is, we've got some things for treatment wise, we've got a treaty, we've got, we've got recognized areas of disease that is, once it's planted in the brain with alcohol, we've got a feed like this, and it's, it's a problem.
We have a, we've been here an hour, I'm trying to go ahead and just to clean it up, but I'm sitting here thinking, I'm looking around the room, and we've got a great cross section of Macon County minds in this room, and I've come up, I've flopped down twenty awesome ideas that we need to consider. So, we've got that on top of that, is there anything else? Jack?
I have a couple of things, I guess I'll be on.
Yes. The planning board, issues and concerns?
Yeah, there's two things I'd like to discuss, and the reason I've, I've reached this, this venue, because the planning board may get asked for some of this. But, Macon County has, in its code ordinance, it's ten separate ordinances, a follow-up responsibility of the department, planning, management, development. Some of these we deal with on a daily basis, some, but a quick rundown of these, and we will be here in our code of order, building regulations, this involves formation of building departments, building, you can have code of order, etc. Blood orders of Macon County, regulates development activity, brings back southern edge of areas of our county, we use it in North Carolina Department of Public Safety model ordinance, with Macon County modifications, and NC Department, loose device, or, on our activities, they, while they're struggling to behave, we don't force them to take them to see us. Uh, sign control, that's a concept, went for, uh, solar and subdivision control, again, we use North Carolina Department of Environmental Health, Natural Resources, Water Quality Division, we use their model ordinance, and again, they loosely write hurt on our activities. Telecommunication towers, water ship protection, that's definitely going to Department, Department of Environmental Quality, and they monitor our activities for that. High impact land use, regulates location of certain activities, what they actually implement in ordinance. Subdivision ordinance, of course, subdivision, any division land, that regulates that. Building high ordinance, regulates high civilians, license based, is it sexually oriented, is this system, I bet we can all figure out what that is. But.
Uh, what?
Okay.
Just want to jack through this.
But sometimes it's confusing and cumbersome for us in our department to know how to apply these ordinance, and sometimes difficult to determine how to apply these certain, certain things. I'm not saying we're weak in that area, but there's so many that you have to, have to refer to, make sure someone's able to apply. And this is my point. It is sometimes confusing and cumbersome in my staff, for myself, that working this every day, how confusing and cumbersome most of this people, people, say, you're moving here, working your business here, contracting, or developing here, try to figure out if they have covered all the bases that Macon County requires, if they have looked at all the different places. And I've heard people are trying to figure this out, and it's not that they say that our regulations are versatile or more restricted than other places. Neither, what I hear about that is, well, that's not a very restricted ordinance, so where I come from, a lot worse. But what I do here is, how do I know that you guys don't have something else that I have not found, that I know that you know and want to provide? And they might not have thought of that until they've already bought it or started developing. So, what I would like to ask the board commissioners to consider is consider evaluating, if it would be possible, to combine some or all of these ordinances into one development ordinance, and if another, for no other reason, please do. Just like that to be considered. If, if the board determines that there's some value in what I'm asking, I would also ask that the board commissioners do your assignment, planning board, county staff, or some outside source, determine if they'll give Macon County too, to provide these, and if they're liable to do so, assign a leader to planning board, county staff, or some other outside source, source of capacity, combining these ordinances to investigate our systems. I think that in accomplishing this, which benefits everyone who is or is thinking of moving themselves to the business of Macon County by streamlining the process, that determines what and how Macon County regulates development activities relating to their project. And I thank the board commissioners for their considerations. And, uh, if you want to discuss, if you have some questions, we'd be glad to entertain you, but I'll be going to the next topic of the study. Thanks, Jack, that's an excellent, anything we can do to simplify.
Yeah, great idea, Jack.
Also, the, just to give you a little background, subdivision ordinance has a technical U P that evaluates, of subdivision, they're made up of subdivision administrator, one member of the planning board, one of the fire marshal's office, one of the government health, one of the planning and development office. This works fairly well, I think, there's nothing wrong with that system. And we're in the back of the person, they're approved, but we have three ordinances that each require, they, we'll do here the request, there's two boards that require three ordinances. And there can request an appeal from the regulation of the ordinance, or relief from the decision of the administrative ordinance. Uh, one is the water ship protection ordinance, which requires a water ship, a new board consisting of five members. Uh, side ordinance, which requires to be heard by the board of adjustment, consisting of five members of two ordinance. The high impact land use ordinance also requires to be heard by the board of adjustment. The problem here is, is you five should know, it's hard to find volunteers. The problem here is, is you five should know, it's hard to find volunteers to line up for these jobs. It's even harder to get the forum together and make a decision. These people are seeking relief, that may be prompted attention. What I would recommend is the planning board meets monthly, if you guys don't kill me. But, and I think it's, the planning board is surprised if a person's capable of making good, accurate, lawful, and fair decisions related to these ordinances. And I think that if you would allow the planning board to be designated active as these units, or definitely, or to, such time the board commissioners determine other avenues than they're, I would like for that to be considered. Then simplify, straight one, I like it.
Don't the town do that, doesn't the town do an ordinance that makes the planning board the board of adjustment?
Yeah, the planning board and the board of adjustment, the same board.
Right, I thought they said that.
That's all I have.
Sure, thank you, Josh. Do you think further, anyone? Joe, you close the remarks, or I'll take off on my high ratings?
Well, I thank y'all the board commissioners for meeting with us, and I know the planning board, this is something that we wanted to say for a long while, it's always good to put face to face and combine our ideas and let our voices be heard and let you know of our concerns and that we appreciate what you're advocating us and assigning the tasks that we do, and I want to personally thank each of the members of the planning board for their work, as you know, they're volunteers, and, you know, they take time out of their schedules to come here and for the betterment of Macon County, and say, Bill's going to be going off the board here this year, is yours up this year, Chris?
Got me wearing a year.
So we got a year. But I know, Bill, one special thank you for your, your time and served.
When you go out, Bill, you know?
Isn't you, you're right there.
He's put in a lot of, lot of hours and hard work on the, on the board, along with everybody else, just know that he was going to be rotating off, want to publicly recognize him tonight, for his efforts, for Jack, and for Chris, serving as the chairman for the last several years.
Three or four.
Sometimes I thank this job and appreciate your leadership of the board during that time.
Thanks, thanks for taking over.
Thank you. Joe, make sure you can get your address, you're excellent at where to send that retirement check. You know that. And I want to personally, and on behalf of this board, thank all of you for your volunteer service. I've had the opportunity to sit in your chair, and I ended up in this chair somehow, I was playing, but, no, we appreciate you. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you're a great cross section in Macon County, and when you're having a good conversation, good things happen in Macon County. We already live in a good place, like Macon, great, and that's kind of what I thought was a sort of the theme of the conversation after listening to everything tonight, is what can we do to make Macon County a better place? What do we, as I said in my definition earlier, where do we want to go? How do we get there? Seems pretty simple. We picked up twenty, now twenty-two, great ideas to, to discuss, and I'm sure I'll be emailing this board out, everything that was brought up tonight, and we'll try and narrow that down and give you all where we want to go, and we're going to be looking at y'all, how do we get there? Looking forward to your efforts, your thoughts, again, great cross section, brilliant minds in this room, looking forward to see how we can improve Macon County, make it a great place, continue to make it a great place, and even better places to live, so appreciate all your efforts. Anything else? I'm going to thank Carl too, he's not here tonight, but several of us, I know Commissioner Shields, Commissioner Bell, and myself, all been liaisons to this board, past commissioner years, Carl's taken his tour of duty, kind now, and we appreciate his efforts, or working with y'all, correct board, and I'm looking forward for his efforts and what he's learned.
Before we dismiss, our next, Mr. Manager, our next regular review is?
March thirteenth, fourteenth, or fourteen?
Fourteenth. Yes, sir.
Again, gentlemen, I'll summarize, well, I've taken my next on tonight, I'll, I'm not trying to initiate a discussion, but we'll have them all for you so that you can kind of thank them before a meeting, we'll have it, I think we've got a very, very full agenda, a march meeting, so we're going to consolidate it into a couple of the higher end ones tonight, and maybe at our echo meeting, we'll discuss this in further. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
That's great, Peter.
Welcome to the adjournment. Second all favor?
Aye. And this time, for the planning board, our next meeting is getting to March sixteenth, five, we're going right here, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all votes aye.